Right, members, good evening, welcome to Ramsgate Town Council Council. And good evening and welcome to any of those residents or anybody looking in who's not a resident online. Welcome to this meeting. This is a long agenda, so can I ask members to be shortened to the point on anything that they want to make? So that we can get through every item on the agenda. So without further ado, we'll move on. Apologies?
Apologies from councillor Lyber, who has a doctor's appointment, and councillor Young, who has a personal commitment.
Thank you. Declarations of interest, anybody? Item 11. Yeah, I have to declare an interest on item 11 as cabinet member of Thanet District Council. So I will leave the room when that's on and councillor Nixie will take my place for that, for that part. Thank you. We had no public participation this evening. That's item 3. Item 4, minutes of council meetings. Right, members? Seconda? Okay, all in favour, please? Thank you. Right. Item 5, finances including grants. Item 1 of 5 is to receive a report, or a report, a report of payments from the 1st to the 28th of February 2025. The council is asked to note the payments authorised by the town clerk and RFO, a total of £7,132.57p, and approve the payments above the threshold delegated to the town clerk and RFO, which is a total of £48,989.36p. Members, any comments in relation to those? No? So, yes, councillor Green?
There are no comments. I'll propose that we note and approve as appropriate.
Seconda? All in favour, please show? Thank you. That's carried. Item 2 of 5, yeah, and actually the other thing I forgot, could you turn, make sure your mobile phones are turned on? Lovely reminder, thank you councillor Green. Or put on silent, whatever way you want. Thank you. So item 2 of 5 is to consider a report from the deputy town clerk, finance officer, and the recommendations of the grant scrutiny panel on the funding applications detailed below. And those are Event Funds 24/25, EF20, Event Fund 25, Ramsgate Festival of Sound, 26 St George's Church and Great British Carnival. So I'm just going to take those first. So, members?
I'd propose to be accept the recommendation.
Seconda? Councillor Austin, all in favour, please show? Thank you. That's part 1 of 2. Part 2 of 2, Event Fund 25/26, Ramsgate Old Motor and Motorcycle Club, Ramsgate branch of the Royal British Legion. Again, any members got any views or comments on that? No? Could I have a proposal for acceptance? Councillor Austin and councillor Green seconded. All in favour, please show? Thank you. Right, the third part of 2 is Ramsgate Fund 25/26, which is the Ramsgate Society, Ramsgate Space CIC, and Osborne and Watt, whoever that is.
One of those, the grant scrutiny panel has actually passed it to the council to make a decision. And that is Ramsgate Space CIC. So that one at the moment doesn't have a recommendation from the grant scrutiny panel. Also the Osborne and Watt CIC has a recommendation, which is for further information. Shall I go through those two?
Yeah, if you would, Laura, thank you.
So just to go back a step, the Ramsgate Society Restoration of the Dunkirk Memorial, the grant scrutiny panel had recommended £1,378. There's been £3,622 remaining in the quarter. And there's two applications in front of you for £3,500 each. The first one is Ramsgate Space CIC for the Ramsgate Space Activation Hub. And Ramsgate Space seeks to deliver a scheme that activates the town centre's empty shop units, regenerating the high streets economy and providing opportunities. To kickstart the initiative, they've secured 17 Albert Court, formerly known as Gerry's Coffee House. This space will serve as the public headquarters where businesses, community groups and creatives can trial their ideas, test benches and launch short-term projects. The grant scrutiny panel had asked for clarification on 2 matters. And it was whether this project is funded by TDC, and it's where members recognised Louise Brooks's name. And Louise has previously done some consultancy work for TDC, but this is, TDC is not linked to this project. And then also we've asked, how long do they hope to be using 17 Albert Court? And initially, a minimum of six months, hopefully a year. So pending answers to the questions, the grant scrutiny panel left the decision with members as to how much to give. And so there was £3,500.
Isn't the TDC project, you're right, and she doesn't work for TDC at the moment, but can we just remind ourselves it is of TDC property, just for clarity?
Obviously, this is for the group who, Thomas was with us this afternoon. But they did say that they would be here, but obviously not. My main concern was about the length of the lease. So what we don't want to do is Ramsgate Town Council to give money on a very short-term lease. What I would advocate is that, once we, if we can get the answers to those 2 questions, it can come back. It can come back, and I would think it could come back in April. The reason I say that, because you'll have a new funding stream in, and you might then decide to want to give them the full amount.
Haven't we got the information?
Yes.
Yeah, so a minimum of six months, I'm hoping to expect 12.
Okay, yeah, fine. Okay, yeah. Councillor Green, then?
Could we review this next month if we've got the information?
Of course, if you've got the information.
It says they got it now. They had it, it's all right. I would thought that was just, bear with me, sir.
So yes, the information requested, we do have.
We do have, okay. So you can decide on that, councillor.
I mean, I attended the first and have helped connect Louise with the empty property officers. And so I know there's a great deal of work being done, all free of charge by these people who are experts. One of the things that came out of the meetings I've attended is we have this real need to actually hot house or help new businesses start. There's a huge energy here.
I don't wish to stop you on that, councillor, but it is, yeah, indeed, I totally agree with you. So, but so that's, that's what the panel have said that they would give if the answers had come back.
It used to be the information viewer, the Gerry's cap afterwards, does concern me how much we can start paying. If it's such a good idea, why don't these people come up with the money and basically do it themselves, and we could follow them through? I mean, it's always spending our money, always. Anyway, that was all.
Thank you, councillor Sean.
Me, councillor Austin, councillor Green on the empty shops forum, so we meet every week. And Louise, Louise. Doing a lot of work and sort of doing searches on land registers to find out who owns some shops. Sometimes it's quite unclear. And trying to do sort of pop-up shops, make some new shops for them. So that is, we're trying to encourage people, you know, businesses to come in, even if it's just for a short period of time. So it seems like there's some just saying, what do they, how much, they don't actually say how much money they want.
Yeah, they want it's £3,000, but which has been recommended £1,000. We don't have a recommendation, so there you are.
Could I recommend a different lot then? Can I make that as a proposal? So we have £3,500 and that will be the Peter exhausted.
That's what's left. But that, that means the other one won't get anything.
I think the other one is recommended to be brought back anyway in the next quarter because of lack of.
It's up to you, members, it's up to you.
Just a point I wanted to make before councillor, when you made that last one, was just to say that this project is completely 100% in line with national viewpoint of recommendations for generation of high streams. So I've made a proposal.
All these fingers going up.
Two fingers.
I proposed that we give them the amount they've requested, seconded.
Ramsgate is going to be a pilot scheme for the national sort of shop auction legislation that's coming up now.
But what we can say to you is councillor Wing and I were there this afternoon, and government, government bodies were there, they made CLG. They were taking in everything that was said this afternoon and taking that away back to government. So that's brilliant, if I was not real concerned. Anyway, we have a proposal and a seconda. Did you want to say something, councillor Green?
Well, only in support, because I think this is something that is really important. Something that one of our higher councils should be doing anyway, I think. With that up, so we need.
Right, you've got a proposal and a seconda, that the full amount is given to, to these applicants. All those in favour, please show? It's carried, thank you.
Can I ask a question? It was, the comment was made that that would probably be brought up, that calls out the money. Is there any degree of regret to, as I get the budget being carried forward, transferred via whatever language we want to use, to replenish that budget a little bit?
Can we come back to that on you?
Yeah, I'm looking at the town clerk, because we've had recent discussions about town motion retro money, since I know that there would be some.
We're nearly in next year's.
Yeah, we're nearly there, aren't we?
I know, and we're very close to it, so.
So can we have that discussion another time? So we, councillor Moore?
It's just to say that I didn't vote for it.
That's okay.
I was voting against it.
Don't worry.
Just a quick note, I know we voted for this now, I'm a town centre campaigner, so. Definitely need something to happen in our town centres.
We do.
That's why we voted for it, councillor.
That's, that's carried, let's, let's move on. Remember what I said, we've got a lot to get, to get through, please. Right, on that last item, which is the Osborne and Watt. We need to discuss that, it's on the agenda.
So that was the recommendation with grant scrutiny panel, that the applicant, that the matter be deferred whilst the applicant seeks permission for the site and for the event.
Because they've got neither. Members, hopefully you're all in agreement with that. So if you just nod. We all nod, yeah, that's okay, thank you. Okay. Right, item 3 of 5.
Community services.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Oh, sorry, yes, I thought that was under 3. Community Services Fund, Citizens Advice Thanet, Pie Factory Music, New Road Divergent Friends CIC, Paddle Media and CS5, Sonder Arts CLSC. Are they all the applicants?
Thank you, Chair. So again, 3 of those, there's a recommended summer money from the grant scrutiny panel. The only one without a recommendation at the moment is Pie Factory Music, where the applicant hasn't actually specified how much they want from the council, but they've set out the funding that they need to operate, and actually it's on the, it's on the screen. So last year, £17,378 was given for, at what you look at the top of the screen, enabling sessions to continue following the loss of funding from elsewhere. So again, you're asked if and how much you would like to contribute to, to these activities.
How much have we got?
Yeah, I was just asking a question. About £32,000, was it £30,000?
I put it up, didn't I?
I believe the total is at the top, isn't it?
Did you write at the top? Thank you. 39?
39,000, so from the other cost of this, which would be only 11,000 left in the budget.
Members, I think we all know how important Pie Factory is to our youngsters and what good jobs they do, and how they've been, pardon my expression, been shafted by Kent County Council. And I think every, we should try and do every effort that we can to, to help them. Councillor Green?
I'm going to propose 50.
That's absolutely, oh, sorry, councillor Sean, you were just.
I do know that Zari up there, actually has worked up hard up there. There's a congo club years ago, my daughter's brought up in there as a children's centre. I tried to arrange a meeting at KCC with Roger Goff, spoke about this to get some funding, but apparently they moved into the commercial bidding. So whatever bit of money, funding I was going to get, had been put on hold. So whatever money, I wouldn't mind a private word later on. There's lots of things that we don't always know.
No, well, by all means, please talk to, no, please talk to the town clerk. Who was next? Councillor Huxley?
Just saying, do we, it's something we do that we fund wages, I thought we didn't. As the pay wages through our.
I'd say the community services grant has, has paid for salaries, as per the Citizens Advice Bureau, is a session supervisor salary.
Councillor Austin?
I think councillor.
Beg your pardon, you're.
I just wanted to say, when we offer less than the total, quite often it tends to be specified it's for those sections that it's for. And I suggest that in this case, we don't specify and that they can choose.
They haven't said how much they want. According to the town clerk, they haven't said how much that they want.
Okay, but we allow them the choice of how they spend it within a wide range of options.
And we've only done that since we were the grant panel.
Yeah, councillor Austin?
Advice from the town clerk, it appears we want to give more money than there is in the budget, because all of these are good causes, they're all relying on us, they're all the kinds of things we want to support. Is there another likely budget heading that is underspent that we could fire from in order to be able to offer the full amount to all these organisations?
We're only just thinking about the next financial year, that it could be something that there's a sum of money awarded today, but then the matter's revisited in the future.
And I can always come back.
Okay, so we would be able to offer the pie factory whatever is, whatever is left when we've given the grants to the others recommended by the grant scrutiny panel.
The council believes that that is the right thing.
Yeah, assuming that people want that, yeah.
So, got a proposal and a seconda? Or did anybody second it? Sorry, I can remember, councillor Nixie seconded it. Members?
I'm going to abstain on this, because there's so many other issues that we don't really know about. I fully support them. I'm a KCC.
Well, you don't, I should have said.
There's more to it than what you.
You love the party.
I am, I know Zari, I've been up there several times. I want to know the whole picture.
Councillor Sean, thank you for that, you know, you're entitled to your opinion, and that's that. And let's, let's move on. Next one. Citizens Advice.
So the other applicant, the other community services applications, including, so Citizens Advice Bureau, and there's a recommendation to award £22,000. Euro Divergent Friends CIC, recommendation to award £2,500. Paddle Media for Creative Journalism Workshops and Strange Tourist Training Newsroom, recommendation £2,500. And Sonder Arts CIC, Happy Mondays Community Group to award £2,000. I can obviously go into more detail.
Sit yourself down. Councillor Green?
Yeah, I was very keen last year to, to, that we supported Citizens Advice. Because it enabled them to, to run a drop-in service in Ramsgate, which, which wasn't supported by anyone else. But since then, I've noticed that they're running drop-in services right across Thanet, Broadstairs, everything, everywhere. So we seem to be supporting something that they're getting funding elsewhere from, for everywhere else. Not so, not sure whether giving them this money is the right thing to do.
Can we ask?
Just from the point of view of, you know, is it fair?
Are you saying you want more information as to what they're spending their money on?
I have asked for that, through the town clerk, I don't know if it's.
Eileen did, Eileen's asked, and we did have a response. I'm afraid I don't remember the answer off the top of my head.
We can defer this, just let councillor Wing come in.
They gave us a breakdown last year on what they provided, and I emailed back. I can't remember whether it came into my TDC email, I'm sure it was this one. And I was really impressed with the breakdown, because it actually gave people numbers, and that was, I'm sure it was all Ramsgate-based. But I, I mean, I think a breakdown of what they're spending the money on would be useful, like the youth centre I've done, the Pie Factory. But also asking people to report on the money we're given, because we are giving them substantial amounts of money. So I'm sort of, I support the Citizens Advice Bureau, I'm giving them the money, we just need more information upfront and then better reporting on what the money was, how effective the money was.
Just to clarify, I don't think councillor Green wasn't saying that, so they're getting funding from other places. It's a case of like, right, well, I mean.
We, we had feedback based on what they delivered in Ramsgate last year.
Also getting money for somewhere else. So we could use that money with another community.
I, I totally understand what you're saying, but this is an oversubscribed service, and there is a desperate need for it.
It absolutely is.
You need to make sure every penny that we hand them is spent in this town.
Indeed, and I think that is what's, that is what's councillor Green, councillor Nixie are saying.
And I agree with that.
That we, that we find out what it is, because we not want that part of that money being spent in Broadstairs or.
No, exactly, and that's what I was saying. But their report for last year was really expensive and really good.
Councillor Sean?
Yeah, I back what to a county wing said. It's a much-needed service in Ramsgate. I don't like to say it's a deprived area, but it is. I've always supported it somewhere along the way. But we do need that information where that money's been spent and how many, because if we knew that, everybody would be happy where our money's gone.
That's absolutely.
Citizen the author makes the funding amount sort of £22,000 specifically for the Ramsgate-based session supervisor stroke advisor. Explains it, doesn't it? Yep.
Councillor, sorry councillor Green.
I know, I know, I'm sorry, you're saying that this specifically says it's for Ramsgate.
That's not the issue.
It says it here.
It's not the issue.
I know what you're saying, but this is what that's, so you obviously don't. Councillor Green said they're getting outside funding for other places, which is fantastic. So could they possibly get outside funding for us too? It's not that they're not using the money wisely, I think they're using it very wisely. The fact of the matter is, is if they're getting outside monies, are they able to get that for Ramsgate? If so, we could use the money that we are going to give them for other causes. That was the issue.
I think we need that, we just need that information. So I'm going to propose that we defer this until we get information as to what their outside money else they get from elsewhere, unless you want to.
Well, I'm quite happy to defer it to the town clerk. For her to look at the information that we've already got, and assure herself that we're not.
You're happy with that?
We're not.
I can quickly find it on my laptop.
That we're not.
If that's what you want, I've never got through it, so it's up to you if you want to propose that, councillor Green.
I propose.
Seconda? Members hear that?
What was the proposal, sorry?
That, that we, we grant the £22,000, but defer it to the town clerk to examine the information that we've already got from the Citizens Advice Thanet, to reassure ourselves that we're not supporting something that they're funding everywhere else of another source.
Okay, members, all those in favour, please show. That's agreed, thank you.
And do council agree to the other recommendations?
Oh yeah, do you agree to the other recommendations within the report? Agree? Thank you.
Have we got the money? In the budget?
Yeah, just about. Right, item 6, committee minutes, as to note.
Item 5.3.
Oh, do you know, I just thought that was 5.3. I did that last time, didn't I? Right, okay, item, item 5.3. To receive a report containing various viadements requested by the Town Promotion Committee. Oh, it's the town promotion committee of viadements, isn't it? Note, there is a time available for the Finance and General Purposes Committee meeting to consider these before returning the matter to March council meeting, if members wish.
So the first matter is, actually, not a viadement, but it was still something that the council was asked to consider, and it was a relocation of palms. And the Town Promotion Committee had been considering what funding was required to plant them out. But it was recommended to all council to not plant the palms on the eastern west cliff and to have them recycled. However, we got information from Thanet District Council that starting next week, they're going to start planting them in the ground. At the locations that we.
I can update you even further on that. They're going to start tomorrow.
With us paying?
No.
No. You're going to do it, yeah.
End of.
I had a little chat.
Thank you.
Saves us, saving us £3,000 if they plant it.
End round.
Which is, well.
It's 10.
10, yeah. I don't know until you tell me.
Plants themselves are pop out, so they're doing them good, get out of their pots. They should look nice if you can find a secluded area, because they don't really like the winter winds that we have, but they're quite a strong, hardy plant.
Indeed, indeed. So that's one out of the way.
Thank you, thank you.
Much appreciated.
Well done. Next one is a decorative lights in York Street and Queen Street. This is a new project that the, uh, town centre and tourism manager's been working on and, um, estimated project costs twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-six pounds. The town promotion committee are recommending that there will be an underspend across the town promotion budgets this year. But the twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-six is viated across for use in this project next year. The project, the, the specifics will still need to come to the town promotion for approval, but it would mean that when the, the committee considers the specifics, there is a budget ready to be used if they wish.
Members, any comments?
No, makes sense.
Agree.
I thought the problem in those streets was, um, to do with traffic interfering with lights across the street, is that in result?
Yeah.
Well, there, so there, there's two projects, there's, uh, one that, uh, uh, is being booked in with Kent County Council and the existing wires and brackets are failing and falling down. Um, and so there's going to be a night project, um, involving one of our technicians and, um, Saunders Electrical, who for five nights, when we don't have to divert buses, will be taking down the existing, um, wires and, and brackets. Um, it wasn't envisaged that anything would then go up because of the problems of having to work, um, on a high, on a bus route. Um, however, after the success of the, um, High Street has lighting project and actually how good the, the response has been, how popular they are, they do seem to now finish early. And so, uh, my colleague in the town promotion committee, I think, are keen to explore the option of actually now extending those lights, um, back along Queen Street and.
I just, I can only just add within that, um, when we were considering the budget for town promotion six months ago, um, we were not expecting a new project to come up. And it was with the success of the existing projects that it came up, if you like, an afterthought to those discussions, which is why it's been asked for to be viated out of, um, the unserved funds rather than having been incorporated into the town promotion budget in the first place. I just thought I'd throw that one in as an explanation on that, thank you. So actually, looking for approval for that.
Yeah, I was going to say, are, are you okay with that, members?
Yeah.
For approval, for that approval? Yeah, okay, that's, that's great.
And the next one is, uh, the decorative lighting electricity supply. So where the town centre lights are currently plugged into, it, there was a one hundred amp fuse and, uh, Kent County Council's contractors have come along and upgraded, upgraded the, um, the electricity supply box, dropped it down to, I think, a, a twenty or a twenty-five amp fuse, and our decorative lighting is no longer working. Uh. And a one hundred amp fuse is not going to fit into the new box. Um, so we are communicating with KCC about this, but I think the answer could be, you know, sort out your own electricity supply. Um, actually, in the, uh, where the town centre and tourism manager has been off ill for a little while, this matter hasn't progressed the last couple of weeks. But we are wondering whether the, the answer is to have UK Power Network install our own electricity supply. Um.
That'd be about three years' time.
Um, town promotion committee were informed that, um, such a feeder box would cost, um, about four thousand pounds. But, uh, uh, subsequently, our electrician has said that, that, that was, that was a starting point. And I think nothing involving UK Power Network is cheap or quick.
Or quick.
Um, but we have, but since the town promotion committee, this matter hasn't progressed. And so what I've suggested is either leave this matter for now, wait until there's detailed information in the next financial year, and then consider how to proceed and where to find the money from, or allocate some to be carried over now. I, I've suggested actually eight thousand from this year, whi- which is potentially available so that when the matter comes up next year, that again, there's a, there was a potential budget if town promoter to approve the cost.
Counselor Green?
So is our light not working?
It's just mad.
No, I mean.
You can make it up, could you?
No.
We think it was a routine upgrade and.
And our county council has been requested to challenge this.
We could ask, uh, a lovely Counselor Shonk if he would, uh, if he would take that up on, uh, Ramsgate Town Council's behalf as a county councillor.
I certainly, I was going to say that anyway, I mean, KCC, and sometimes they do need a bit of a kick. In a polite way, I mean, the state of the world at the moment, yeah, if the law. Put it in writing, I'd say if I send it to my KCC, I do know Paul Vannett is pretty.
Customer views.
And he's my person, I don't like people. If it saves Ramsgate Town, it's a KCC matter.
Thank you very much. Members okay with that?
Yes.
Talking amongst yourselves, please, members.
Yes.
That's Lamore.
So is there anything, is, is there a viadment, inter corresponding viadment that members would also like to make? Or just wait until next year and then figure it out?
Well, do we buy it just in case?
Set up the chair of the town commander.
Hang on a minute.
Should we do the, look at the viarin over just in case, um, it doesn't come to fruition, but ACC.
Well, I'm going to assure you, I should mention to them and I should expect some type of answer.
Yep.
Yeah. So, um, yeah.
I propose that we do buy over.
Yeah.
Okay, seconded, seconded Counselor Austin.
Uh, seconded.
Eight K?
Eight K, yeah.
Members, all in favour, please show. Thank you.
I'm saying, because I can see KCC.
Cheers.
Last one.
So, may I just report that we did have apologies from council headroom to.
Ah, okay.
I didn't give them a thing in the meeting, but apologies have come in.
That's fine, thank you. Right, move on to, um, item six, committee minutes, um. There's two sets of minutes, which is the draft town promotion committee meeting on the sixth February and the draft planning infrastructure committee meeting on the fourth, fifth February. Members, any comments on those minutes?
No.
So I propose acceptance of those minutes. Seconded, that's Hudson, all in favour? Thank you very much. That's carried. Item seven, planning application. This, uh, this planning application is for the land at rear of ten Effingham Street. Members? Can you just stop talking amongst yourselves for a second, please? Um, right, it's to consider the land at rear of ten Eff- Effingham Street, uh, which is for the erection of a two-storey building to facilitate two, two-bed self-contained flats together with a roof terrace, the ground and first floor level, and associated external stairway and shed. The note on the, on the, on your, um, agenda is that this application was called in after the planning infrastructure committee agenda was issued and the deadline for comments cannot be extended to the next meeting. So that is why it's been brought here for members to consider this and have, uh, and have their, their sake. So, uh, Counselor Austin, bring you in, because you was the one who pointed it in.
Because although in principle, we're very keen on finding brownfield sites, town centre sites, et cetera, and it's offering, um, it's offering, uh, two-bedroom flats, which is something we need. It does look very, very squashed in the, uh, in the space. And I wanted to have a closer look and to see if we were happy that the living conditions for residents would be okay, that other services would be available and that, um, uh, neighbours would not be adversely affected. I note on the planning portal that, um, waste services at TDC are concerned about, um, access. And I think it's just generally sort of problem with the very squash of the site, so I thought we should have a perspective.
Counselor Shonk?
Well, I would buy that, waste many a time, and I would say myself personally, it's too small to put a property in there. I mean, you're being like that. It's been a, a, well, a dump for eighties, it used to have loads of scaffolding. I think that used to come in back, that come into the town, doesn't it? Which was that? It's, I think, really, some people need to have a look at it, because it's, it's, it is far too small to put a property on it.
I should probably add, sorry, the archway house which backs onto it, there's already problems, as you will know, Chair, with the collection, with collection of waste from there because the, the access is so narrow and it's just going to compound the difficulties.
Any other comments, members? I mean, the actual design is fine.
It's fine.
Um, I think it's the same issue as this, that it's a quite a squashed area to get that in access-wise, um.
Is there a fire risk as well?
Fire risk, yeah, it's big. So I, I think there are several reasons. In, in my humble opinion, as to why, uh, why we as a council should, uh, put our views to that district council that we have concerns over. Over its size and bulk in a small area, together with, um, waste issues and, uh, and possible fire risk with that. Um, access out of the building should, should occur and also for fire. Or ambulance services being able to, to get into the property. I propose that, members, for second, Counselor Austin.
Yes.
Might I, might I ask that we, we add, despite it being, despite our support for a, you know, a town centre site, infill sites, et cetera, because obviously that's the kind of thing that we would normally, in principle, like.
But this doesn't look like it, I'm afraid.
Indeed.
That's, that's a very squash, you know.
Okay, members, so we will see objections on, on, on those grounds. Thank you very much. Um, item eight, Radford House. Um, which is in three, three parts. Um, part one is to receive a report from the town clerk regarding funding for temporary external room hire and consider how to proceed. Item two, to receive a port, a, a, a report even, uh, from the town clerk regarding temporary accommodation for the technicians at Ramsgate Port and consider how to proceed. And part three is to receive a note report from the town clerk providing an update of various matters. And over to town clerk, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so the first report is activity relocation costs. And this is where, um, thinking about when Radford House is closed, there's, um, small bookings that pay for space, and these are being offered, the, the, being relocated to the council chamber. Um, small bookings that do not pay for space, charities and local organisations, and again, they're being offered the council chamber. You've got larger bookings that pay for space and they will hire larger rooms elsewhere, but then hopefully return to Radford House. But then, uh, the report concerns larger bookings, things that can't fit in this room, um, but can't afford to go elsewhere. And there's particularly three groups of, um, activities that, that we have created. And you're asked to consider, do we keep these going elsewhere and then eventually bring them back to Radford House? Or do we, um, just stop them for the period and then hope to revise them, revive them again in the future? That's the, uh, Repair Cafe, which is, uh, one Sunday per month for three hours. It suggested that they could go to Pie Factory at sixty pound a month. Uh, the Horticultural Society, uh, who could possibly go to St Lawrence, uh, Hall at fifty pound a month. And then Chat Time, which is every Tuesday for three and a half hours. Uh, we've been looking at, uh, Small Boat Owners Club or St Lawrence Church Hall for a couple of hundred pound a month. Um. Uh, for Chat Time, you've also got, there needs to be an organiser, which is currently the Radford House event organiser. So do we pay for her time and also managing Chat Time every week somewhere else? Um, within my report, I've, I've put, broken this down into, uh, the, the funding for room hire elsewhere and organisation of, um, Chat Time. And suggested that potentially there's a budget of seven thousand pounds needed to support these activities elsewhere for eight months. So it's whether, whether in principle, this is something you'd like to keep all of these going before we bring them back to Radford House or knock, knock them on the head.
Counselor Nipsey?
So, because I've, um, suggested this, um, St Lawrence Church Hall, uh, as a possible venue, um, while this is happening and it's in my ward, I have offered my, um, councillor allowance up, um, to subsidise this as, as much as my allowance can, once it runs dry, obviously, then it comes to council, I should imagine. Um, but for the St Lawrence Hall bookings, my councillor allowance will be used in its entirety for that.
Counselor Makings?
How many people come to that time, does anyone?
A lot. A lot.
Very, very.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's one I think.
The most important.
Yes.
Thirty-four, thirty-four. Thirty-four. Could it be combined with the place at, oh, that's the picture, that.
No, St George's.
St George's.
Wait a minute, I've, I've crossed open here, just batting in, um.
That, I don't know.
There, there isn't enough room there, you've got the soup kitchen upstairs, basically the shop fills the hall. So it's a great idea, but there just isn't the capacity at, at St George's, I managed the length. But I, I, I definitely think Chat Time needs to be kept.
Very important.
Uh, we could explore the yacht club, Ed, the air centre, uh, you know, places where people can walk to that are not far from Radford House.
Thank you. Counselor Green, no?
Yeah, I was just thinking, um, bearing in mind that it's been in the town centre so far, as close to the town centre it or accessible on the loop, um, is quite important. Um, so I don't, I mean, St George's has been mentioned, um, but I do know they're very busy, never got on, but there may be others, um, that might also be usable, I don't know what, um.
Can I just come in? Well, when we discussed it, I mean, don't get me wrong, we see this as to benefit Radford House and it's a town centre and everything, but we also are aware that there are people outside of the town that haven't had the availability to be able to come into the town to do something like Chat Time. So because it was St Lawrence Hall and it could also use up my budget and it is on the bus route, it was considered, and also there are people offering lifts, it was considered putting it in another part of Ramsgate, it just so happens to be that but building, because it's free, like I say, I can pay for it. So allow people in that particular area, bear in mind it's near Nedcor and Newington. And so those people don't tend to come in or don't have the ability to. So the idea was almost on purpose not to have it in the town centre, just to let those people know it was going on. And then when it reverts back to Radford House, they might be more inclined to come down and actually use what's in the town centre. So it actually was done for a reason.
If I can just come back in there and just say, uh, in relation to that, whatever you do, we agree wherever it should go, um, what about supporting, uh, our officer? Uh, and paying our officer to organise that, because that is the person who organises that event. Counselor Austin?
I think it's really important for the, for the event that we carry on with the same person who has built up really good, positive, trusting relationships with.
If they want to do it, of course.
If they want to do it, but we offer it to them in the first instance.
Yeah, indeed, yes.
Yes. So may I say, the, I, I mean, the venues could change, the, the event organisers currently doing a lot of legwork, so, um, the, the proposed venues, if something more suitable becomes apparent. But it, it's more whether in principle and the budget itself is, is available to continue this, this work.
Do we have figures on that?
Um, so I think that the, the, the officer time and, and, and the hiring of places, uh, we need, um, seven thousand pounds for eight months. Um, and would suggest that the new project's budget, probably the balance of forty-four thousand, could be considered for this purpose.
So it'll be six thousand pounds with the other thousand or. So it'll be six thousand pounds with the other thousand or so. So Nicksey.
Councillor Shaw.
I know, I would find somewhere for this place. Do they just take all their tools and, how do I know they're good and to do what their activities? Is there another problem, storage? Storage?
I think actually Councillor Austin.
Councillor Austin.
Yeah, so we will, there is storage at, uh, the Pie Factory, it's one of the reasons that we are keen to move there. Um, we also obviously want to help contribute to their budget with a bit of rent. Uh, the space is suitable, they, they already, the, the youth worker at the, uh, Pie Factory who runs the bike project is our volunteer who runs bike repairs at the Repair Cafe, so we've already got that link. And there is parking at the Pie Factory, which is crucial for people who are bringing a large item to repair.
So, members, uh, the proposal.
We can't.
I propose that we.
But the Horticulture.
Seven pounds.
Do we?
Make it happen.
Councillor Makinson, are you actually listening to what, do you, what the, what it is?
Yeah, but I didn't hear the Horticulture.
No, well, you haven't got to that bit yet. So, so are members happy with the proposal from Councillor, from Councillor Green?
Yes.
So all in favour, please, so, thank you, so that's, that's.
Uh, so the next report is the Technicians' Depot.
Sorry, sorry. You mentioned about the other.
The Horticulture.
Yeah, so that, that was part of those funds.
They, I asked before we voted on it, but I missed it.
Um, so the, the next matter is the Technicians' Depot and I think most of you were present for, um, uh, an informal, um, introduction to this, uh, project, um, after last council meeting. So we've now got some more information and, um, this is, uh, moving the technicians to in, into the port up to a year. It could be longer, but looking at a year to begin with. Uh, so in the report in front, you've got, um, office space, two thousand five hundred for the year. Land hire for vehicles and the two forty foot storage containers, two thousand two hundred and fifty for the year. There will be additional, um, contribution required on electricity, council tax, um, and we don't have those figures yet. Uh, business rates are not included, they're to be determined. Uh, the process, uh, is that, uh, the licence, um, uh, is expected to be straightforward, it, it will be the estate team at TDC who's preparing this.
It is, I, I would say there that, that it is with the full support of the harbour master. So we don't envisage any issues.
So, uh, alternative storage and workshop options were considered, but the current proposal includes the use of the two storage containers. Uh, the lease area may be shared with containers from coastal maintenance team, um, but this will not impact its operations. It's in a secure area covered by CCTV. Uh, the technicians could move, uh, late March, mid April. Um, we've got a quote to, uh, so first of all, to remove the, um, the two forty foot storage containers and relocate them, uh, we're looking at about seven hundred and eighty pounds. Unfortunately, associated with that cost is the cost of removing the gate, um, at fence at the front of Radford House to get them out. And it's, uh, to remove the sliding gate and two panels, seven hundred pounds. And then to refit them, one thousand three hundred and fifty pounds. Uh, but unfortunately, without reinstating them, we're leaving Radford House unsecure.
And it's a grade two listed structure, so you'd need listed building construction to take them out.
Yeah. Um, uh, budget, so there's no budget for this project, although members have been aware of the project was in the pipeline and that funding would be needed. Uh, the offer from the port is the best value, best location that we found. Uh, given the above costs, I would suggest that ten thousand pounds is, needs to be set aside for this project. Um, and this could come from either project contingency or capital projects and massive acquisition.
Yeah, it's a capital project. Councillor Green.
We're going to do something different, aren't we, to secure Radford House when they're there. Would, would that be cheaper than spending one thousand four hundred and fifty pound on re, re, uh.
Instating.
I need to have to take them out again.
Yeah, probably, because we don't know what, when your, when the work starts on Rad, Radford House, we don't know what the size of the vehicles will be that the contractors will need within that, within there, so they, they may not be able to get their vans or, or lorries through. Uh, depending on what they need, I, I don't know, obviously, but, um, I think that's, that's the long term view, we need to actually do that, but, um, I think that when Town Clerk and I discussed this, uh, earlier on in the week, um, pair of us were concerned that if we don't have the gates put back, that, uh, people just park in there, park any, dump any rubbish in there, they'll, they'll, they'll do whatever that they like, so, um.
Now, I'm not suggesting that when, that it's not secured, but could it be secured with whatever we're going to use ongoing rather than put those gates back? I just have to take them out again.
Uh, yeah, I totally agree what you're saying, I know that's what's going to happen. But I think we need to, um, need to get a little bit of advice from the Thunick Council, from the Conservation Officer, to, to see whether that can be done over a period of time that we take it out. Leave it at, and if you've got another form of enclosure that we could use, which is cheaper than that, then, then we could do that, but, you know, as we say, Councillor.
I was going to completely agree with that, really, but I wanted to, to add, especially can we find an alternative, our favourite Harris fencing, would that be securing us?
No.
Four thousand bucks. But until we know, until we know what access, because I think if you can't get a, a trailer in and out, Councillor Green's obviously right, what, what are the works there, could I have, you know, to get in and out?
That's what I just said.
I know, but I'm just saying, so it's rather put it back, I'm.
Yeah.
I don't have a fencing, I'm, you know, I'm just asking the question.
I understand, I understand what you're saying and that's why I'm saying, if we can get some advice first on that and then we can use whatever.
I'm not suggesting we do something that's temporary, I'm not suggesting if we put in whatever we're going to.
Oh, what, further, further back in the.
Whatever is planned to put in.
Okay.
When we reopen Radford House.
Well, I was, I, I was thinking temporary until we know what the builders need.
Okay, well, that's, hang on a bit, good. Councillor Makinson, you wanted to come in earlier, sorry.
It's not the temporary accommodation in the port, which I think is an absolutely brilliant idea. Um, but I just, who do we pay rent to?
TDC.
TDC, oh, sorry. How ridiculous.
Well, it's not, is it? It's not ridiculous.
Well, they're not using it, we are part of TDC.
No, you're not.
No, we're not.
You're not.
Ramsgate is part of Farnet.
Yeah, I know, but you're not, you're not, you're not part of TDC, the Ramsgate Town Council, and the town council is a separate council from.
And we do quite a lot of work for TDC.
Hmm, and we do charge them rent, it's here.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yes, they don't want to use it, but we do quite a bit of sort of gardening work and rubbish collection and stuff on behalf of TDC, do we charge them for that?
No.
No.
No, but.
Haven't we not paying to store the harbour water kettle on the land we rent?
No, no, it's, it's the opposites that, that are the issue. Um, and, and, and they are, as Councillor Makinson said, they're the best thing we've seen.
Yeah.
Certainly, that shadowed that. The, uh, our technicians can't wait to live in there. And, and I think we may need to consider that on the longer term as well, I believe. Councillor Nicksey.
Can I, are we proposing on this? Can we propose that we go with what has been suggested? With the idea that as, as we go through this process, is if there is an alternative that saves us money in the, in the, in the prospect of reinstating the gates or, or creating a, um, a safe, secure area that we, you know, we, we keep looking at while, while the works are going ahead. But meanwhile, yes, this needs to be done, otherwise we can't get the stuff out, can we? They can't move, so we've got to get it done. It's just purely the, the issue about putting the gates back or securing it. And if we're looking into that, uh, in the meantime, and so be it.
I was hoping we'd be able to lift it up and out onto the road, but I don't think it's possible.
Too big, aren't they?
Yeah, too big and you can't get, you can't get the weight of anything to lift it over. Drop it through the middle of Radford House would be very nice, wouldn't it?
Reinstating the gates, how they're going to be, would also mean that we've started to work.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, yeah, it's up to you, up to you guys, up to you guys. Been a memento, have you finished with that? Yeah, Councillor.
Are, are we talking about unknowns? And, and I think the gates have got to come down to get those contained out because it's too difficult. But I wouldn't reinstate the gates because that whole site has got to be, and I wouldn't put the new gates in either. You've got builders going in and out, we're not going to give a damn about new gates going in, they could be damaged. The, the last thing that's got to go in is the, is the, is the, the final gates. But what we know is and what we don't know is that that site will have to be secured according to building control standards while the developments.
Or help and safety executive needs to follow that.
So, I, you know, I think we're talking about something which we don't know enough about and there are experts that will decide all that.
Fair comment, Councillor Makinson.
Builders always manage to secure their sites.
Exactly.
I don't quite understand why we can't leave the builder to secure the site.
I think you've just said that, yeah.
All over the place.
Has to be done.
Hmm.
So we have a proposal.
Nice.
And so how. So all in favour, as you show? Thank you very much. Let that.
The next one.
So you also have a report on various updates to note. Um, first of all, it is, um, some notes taken, uh, following the meeting with councillors Nicksey and Green and the project manager. Um, also, uh, to, uh, put into your minds, uh, the amount of work that potentially needs to be undertaken whilst the building's being refurbished. And I think it's, it's quite, I mean, quite apparent that we can't get the builders in and then forget about Radford House for eight months. Actually, in order to be able, for it to be, to open and be up and running and there's, there's a lot of background work to be undertaken. And you, you've got a bullet point list of, of, of some of the things that somebody needs to be working out. Um, not, not today, this will come back to you for approval. Um, once we've worked out the timescales and how mu, how many hours it'll take to undertake this work. Um, probably coming back to you to ask, um, for the confirmation that the Radford House events organiser can stay on to undertake this work whilst the refurbishment is taking place. And then also there was a meeting of the design team last week and a report from that meeting is pending, as soon as I get an update, I'll forward it through to everyone.
And members, that's just for noting.
Yes, noted.
Put it in back of the brain box. Like that's Radford House done. Uh, item nine. Uh, councillors' use of council assets, which is to receive a report from the town clerk regarding use of rooms or hire by councillors and consider how to proceed. Permit this activity with accompanying policy or not. Temporary accommodation for the technicians at Ramsgate Port. Oh yes, you've added that on, you've added that on, that was, that was in the last one.
On its toes.
I thought, yeah, came on my toes. Um, members, um, this, this has arisen, um, purely on the basis that, um, two of our colleagues said in the end of the.
Three of you.
Three, well, three of you, yeah, but two of you there and one here, um, wanted or used Radford House for a meeting with residents, it was a residence meeting. Um, so there was some confusion, um, that the town clerk believed that there was a, a record that any of you that used that type of use, um, would have to be approved by council. Um, that cannot be located. Um, so having, having thought about this, uh, and, and having talked and listened to other councils, including Thunick District Council. Thunick District Council doesn't have a policy at all about, uh, councillors using it for whatever that that may be. Or for political meetings, should that be the case. However, um, I think that normally, uh, to have those meetings for your residents, uh, whether it's a surgery or whatever, then I think that's absolutely fine and no cost should be made. Um, I, I do think though, this is just my opinion, obviously you can discuss this after this, after I finish, um, that should there be a, uh, political meeting, then, then there should be a cost, even if it's only a small cost. And, and I think that, and, and the reason I say that is because, um, I know that there is a, a Labour meeting at Radford House next week, I think. Um, nothing to do with local council, it's to do with the elections, with the ca, with the county elections, of which they pay. Um, and, and I think that's, that's the important thing. So I'm going to propose that, that there is no, we don't have a policy, we just do that as, as, as I've said, Councillor Austin.
I'd like to second that, um, yes, political meetings, we've had Green Party meetings at Radford House and we've always been, it would never occur to us not to. But for councillors to be doing stuff that's part of their work, it seems entirely sensible for us to be able to use a council building. Uh, if that requires to go through certain permissions, that's absolutely fine.
Thank you, Councillor Nicksey.
I, um, hmm, I'm not happy about that, don't think, because, I mean, you've got a council building in your ward and you can use it and it's free, is that what you're suggesting?
I'm suggesting if it's, if it's to do with residents.
But, but although it might be a council building, Radford House, I mean, if it was, if it was, if it was here, for example, I could understand it. But Radford House is set up that it basically, you know, washes its face. And just because you have a council building in your ward doesn't mean to say it'd be free to use. I think, I think I would still advise people to pay a sum, I, I'm just conscious of the fact that it has to, it has to pay for itself. And as, and as much as I'd want to give it to community uses, and I know it's a community, you can argue that one the rest of it.
Yeah.
I still think that if councillors use it or something, then maybe there should be money put towards it.
I, I think, I think the issue as well is that those of us, uh, other councillors, where we hold our surgeries, we're lucky enough that we have ours at East Cliff Wells in St Luke's Church, um, every third Thursday of the month. And the church have decided not to pay us, but for us to, to pay because we're serving the community.
Okay, but, but, so, so let me explain, so we use St Lawrence Church and we pay. And, and that's okay, and, and, and so if, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, it doesn't mean, it's not personal, I'm just, I'm just talking about, you know, the, the theory behind this, um, central harbour councils, please don't think it's personal. So let's say, for example, central harbour councillors use that and then don't pay. Then if I wanted as another court councillor, but well, I would need to do something, it doesn't have to be in my ward, I'll use that. Um, but it's residents and I don't pay, so everybody starts to use it and don't, and don't pay. I'm thinking of the money, I'm not thinking about the area, I'm thinking like, I might think, oh, like a, you know, maybe Newington wants to do something with residents and they could do it in the town centre, they won't pay either. It ends up that we could all use it, none of us pay, that's what I'm talking about. Okay.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Been a moment, so, Councillor Green.
Yeah, there's two aspects.
And then, no.
There's two aspects to this, one is councillor work. Now we pay our councillors and we give them a grant towards their wards. But I think they should pay to use Radford House or any other property that we've got. But I think they should pay to use Radford House or any other property that we've got out of, out of that money that we put forward. That's my view. The other thing is political meetings. I don't think we should allow them at all. Not because I've got anything against current parties that are involved, but it couldn't be that there would be a political party that we wouldn't want to be using it. And I don't want to go down that road.
No, but that, but that is, that is a thing, that's a, that's a different issue. If you're talking about a, a real right, right wing party that's.
No, I think it's simpler, it's not. And what we've always said, right from when we took over this building, is that we wouldn't allow it to be used for political meetings.
Okay, can I just point out, um, the part of the, uh, on, on your agenda, item is a draft policy, which I didn't really want to have to introduce, but I mean, that's up to you guys anyway. Um, that it says, the booking, the booking does not interfere with paid bookings or other scheduled council or community events. So it would be secondary to, to any of those. Uh, I did have somebody up here, councillor Wing, did you want to come in?
I mean, I actually, uh, well, I think you can, uh, uh, for me, there's a number of issues because the residents are already paying for Radford House. And if it's ward work, I don't really mind what council uses a facility or where the facility is it is, but if it's a, if it's, if it's a facility that the residents have basically paid for via their precincts, then it doesn't sit very well with me. But I get your point about where do you draw the line. So if I was a ward councillor, if I wanted to set up basket weaving class for, for a group of residents, then clearly I've got to pay for that. But I also agree with David that I don't think there should be any political meetings in any of our buildings. Because how are we going to refuse the British National Party or, or? But because under equality law, we can't refuse that party for not, from, from using our facility. Well, you saw what happened with the PSPO. We could then, then find ourselves in a situation as TDC did, where we've got the Freedom of Speech Alliance blocking a PSPO and threatening to use a judicial review to do that. And we're, we're stuffed. So, you know, I don't care what political party is, including my own, it needs to steer clear of, of buildings.
Okay, I'll put your hand down. And that's all.
Two things really. The first one is, um, when sitting around this room, just looking around, there's only one person, one councillor in this room who's not a dull hatter. Um, so we, I think all of us kind of, we do meetings with residents, we do surgeries. This is a town council and under our town council hat, we don't do surgeries because that's not part of our town council role. It's part of our district council role and it would be part of the, the county role. And it comes back to what councillor Makerson was saying about, if I'm doing a surgery as a district councillor, using a town council property, then I would expect to pay for it because I'm doing a district council role. So I, I think there is that in there. So if we're holding political meetings, um, it, they're certainly not ward meetings. We may have a, a town meeting, that will be something different. And that would be with more than one of us involved. So I, I think that's the first thing. And the other thing is, um, looking at the draft, um, uh, thing here, it does say that it's in this draft that prohibited use would be, must not be using for organising or coordinating activities that serve a political party's interest rather than council business. Which I think covers some of the other things that have, have been said, isn't it? That one that I know is booked, wouldn't get booked if that was the, um, already in place, because I know what that meeting is. So, um, yeah, I, I mean, and I said, I quite agree. I don't think it should be used at Radford House for political meetings, but yeah, thank you. Anyone else want to comment on, I can see friends or smiles and all sorts of things.
Councillor Sean, yeah, anything, yeah.
When I go back a long way here.
Well, we know that.
We had, yeah, well, I'll let you know again. We had a meeting here with Peter Campbell. He's a good Labour councillor, didn't always agree on most things. But on that occasion, we had a public meeting in here. No questions asked. No councillors were invited. I got to hear, so did myself and Barbara Young. What we was offered, Mametay people, when we bought Radford House. So if it was agreed then, why can't we do it now? I mean, how can you have a meeting here if you're Mametay Town Council, inviting no councillor at all, which they weren't, because I never had them invited. I took, I, I, that's why I'm so adamant about this, about the house, because none of us have had a chance to talk about Radford House. And it was £225,000. And this was a, a public meeting that no councillor knew about, except I got to hear from Barbara Young and myself. So if you don't do it once, uh, unfortunately, Peter's not here, not here to defend himself. It happened, which you shouldn't have done, and no minutes were taken.
Was that, sorry, you took, not our meeting, this was.
No, no, years ago. The whole, the whole thing about you using buildings, we used it here.
But this is not just about Radford House. It's about this building as well.
Yeah, but it happened here.
Yeah, I know councillor Sean, but that, that was like a thousand years ago. So.
I remember, that's what.
That's the Nixie.
I just want to put the record straight here. So after the last meeting, councillor, when you said that you knew nothing about it, I went back and looked at Ramsgate Town Council's minutes while you were chair, and I got four minutes, of which I've got them on email and actually printed them out by looking in the car sadly. Four, four lots of minutes where you are chair, where you're not only talking about Radford House, you actually vote for it and you are chair of those meetings. It is in black and white on our websites. I found them when I left the meeting last time. You're more than aware of what happened, you're more aware of the vote. It's there in black and white, as we said it wouldn't be. It very much is. So I think we need to sort of like parse that one, because it's done. You, it was brought onto your chairmanship and we're talking about something else. Thank you.
It's nice that you worry yourself so much about what I've done using, what I've done using. Things change. Uh, once we had the British Star here.
Could you keep raising it?
Yes, I would be.
Councillor Austin.
Um, thank you, Chair. I just want to pick up what councillor Whittington said about the focus of meetings. So I, I quite see if we are doing stuff that is about primarily our TDC role, then it is not appropriate for us to have free use of a Ramsgate Town Council facility. If we are doing stuff that is primarily about our RTC role, then it strikes me that it is. I, I, I appreciate councillor Nixie's point about worrying about, um, use of Radford House. And I think if we get to that stage where we're using it an awful lot and expecting to get it for free, then maybe we need to revisit it. But for the moment, it seems to me to be commonsensical that if it's part of our work for Ramsgate Town Council specifically, we should have access to Ramsgate Town.
Councillor Hudson.
I think either Radford House or here should be used for political meetings, for any sort, whether you pay for them or not. Uh, although of course that's in conflict with, for example, the Labour group for TDC, we use the TDC council change for our meetings every month. So.
But like, as, as I said at the start, the Thannick District Council have no policy and have got no, have got no problem with it.
So, yeah, Chair, I think any political meeting, I don't think the political party or political meeting, whatever it is, they shouldn't be using either this building or the other one at all.
I think particularly. I, I was just going to add from what councillor Hudson said, those part, those political meetings at TDC are closed meetings. When we actually had Polly Billings come and speak to us before she was elected, we didn't have that meeting at TDC because it became a political meeting rather than, um, a work meeting. So we actually found somewhere else to hold it. And I think that's part of differentiation. But I just wanted to come back to item five on the draft, because it does say council work, that it is such a forward surgeryist, we don't hold forward surgeries as, as town councillors. That's district role.
Very true.
Casework, casework is district, but, and that's what's.
Some parish councillors can meet with residents as part of their role when they're not doing houses, we can do still.
But it's forward surgeries is district role, not a town role.
Well, I, I think there's the, I, I think that's a bit of a shady area because, um, I quite often get contacts in.
Yeah.
If we, on my Ramsgate Town Council, and, and they're talking to me as a Ramsgate Town councillor and as the chair of Ramsgate Town Council, not as anything to do with Thannick District Council. So I, I think there is that there. So if we decided to meet with residents where, wherever, I'm just saying, I'm just answering your question. I'm just answering your question. Just answering your question. Uh, councillor Makerson, then councillor Hudson.
Well, when I was the district councillor and not a TDC councillor in Moses Montbury, we had to have residents meeting surgeries because there was no alternative. They wanted to talk about the stuff. And the TDC councillors were available. They're not available. Mark Hopkinson was not available.
Yeah.
So, so we, so we, we can't just ignore the residents because we're only.
No, 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 I think, I think we, we, we're getting away from the process here now. We're getting away from the process. Councillor Hudson, you wanted to say something?
Um, I'm not a double hatter. I do do, I join in with the surgery and I do believe that we should be included for use of RTC properties, uh, for safety. There is, to my knowledge, there is no risk, risk assessment on councillor safety and use of RTC rooms provides some sort of safety.
Yes, good soul. That, that is a good point. I mean, I constantly talk about, we're not, we don't, we don't have access to any safeguarding training, which would, if you've worked in that field and you've had safeguarding training, then you're aware of not putting yourself at risk. Not that I've ever been at risk with residents. But, so I think there is that element, but there is also the element of, of, you know, we're central harbour, so we do have that building in our ward, so I could see the, the issues. And maybe, maybe as a town councillor, we've got to try and locate facilities in each of the wards that, that we can just help undertake some kind of risk assessment so that if they're being used. I know you're saving the church because there are other users in, in St George's. But going back to the political use, I think it's even more dangerous when you use a public building for a political meeting when it's prior to an election. And so I think consideration should be really seriously taken about whether that meeting happens.
Well, you're in perdu then anyway, so you can't.
Yeah.
You can't do that.
Just wanting to add my, what councillor Hudson said, I think I completely agree. If we have an arranged meeting with a resident as a town councillor, that's different to a surgery though, because a surgery is an open public meeting. It's not an arranged meeting with one, two or however many residents on a particular subject. So it is not.
I'm, I'm conscientious, and I, and I want to, I'm, I'm conscious of what the rest of the agenda is. So, um, I'm conscious of this. What I said at the beginning, I can see where this is, this is kind, this is kind of going. I withdraw what I've said. So, uh, I'm not going to propose anything. Withdraw that.
Oh.
Withdrawn it. So, um, because I think members have had, you've had a good discussion on this. Uh, did councillor Wadis, you want to come in?
Well, I was just going to say, we provide each of our councillors with a grant for ward work. We don't need to pay or, or give them access to property free at all. They can pay out of their ward grant.
Councillor Sean.
I'm not, I'm not taking sides on anything. I do agree with some of the ladies. This is a Ramsgate Town Council building. If they're central harbour and it is a surgery, one to one, why not? It, it promotes what we are and I can't see nothing wrong with that.
Right. Does anybody want to put a proposal forward or not?
Can I, can I just check, you're withdrawing this?
Yeah.
And maybe just pretty look at it and come back to it. Um, we've been suggesting provisions rather than discuss it now.
It's up to you.
Well, I'd like to propose that we don't use our buildings for political purposes.
I'll second that.
Right. Proposal a second now? Would I was in favour, sure?
Are we assuming that the ones in the book go, is going ahead because it's paid for?
Yeah, it's paid for, yeah. And that's, that's it. And that's it. End of, right, thank you. That's carried. Thank you. End, end of.
Say, Chair, one of the things that I think's come out of it, listening to people, is safe spaces for councillors to meet people.
The town clerk has written that down and she's got that in and I think.
That is, it is so important for each and every one of us has safe spaces to meet with residents, whether that's in large numbers or one to one.
Well, I, I think, I think we all, we all know what's happened over the last couple, couple of years with, with MPs. We all know, we all know that at times, uh, and certainly a lot of, some, some of us, uh, have had a lot of, um, a lot of bad views from, uh, public on social media and stuff like that and threats and god knows what else. Um, so, you know, there, there is that to it. And, and as you know, tomorrow night's full council, it's Thannick District Council, there's a, uh, a motion in relation to uh, the safety of women and, and, and against, uh, violence against women and, you know, which is very, very important. And I think councillor Green, I thank you for raising that. It certainly wasn't on my mind, but we've got that and so we will look at that.
Can I just check, Chair, that we're going to come back to this, the, the, the other side of the policy at a, at a future meeting?
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
How we use our.
We haven't got a problem.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Right, thank you, members. Right, item ten, uh, clifftop shelters. This is to see and consider ahead of terms offered by Thannick District Council for the lease of fourteen clifftop shelters, uh, to the town council. Supporting reports by the town clerk is enclosed. And just for members, history, I know like some of our, uh, some of our, uh, councillors are already involved in repairing and painting and god knows what else up in, um, central harbour. Clifftop shelters now, this was, this was, this was in a lease by. Yes, 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 yes. This was in a lease by, um, with Ramsgate Society, of which they no longer wish to have. So the Thannick District Council, we've approached them to say that Ramsgate Town Council would take that on. We already agreed that here. Um, so this is the heads of terms, um, with, uh, the proposal that, that we should look at these and if you're happy with it, we will go forward with it. Been a moment. Town clerk.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, so the previous council in 2021 expressed an interest with Thannick District Council on, uh, actually, the initial inquiry was to own fourteen clifftop shelters, but what TDC explained is clifftop shelters are not their own individual parcels of land. And TDC is not going to go through the, the legal legwork of registering each, um, individual shelter with the land registry as its own parcel of land. So they will only lease them to the town council. Um, you've got the head of terms in front of you for a six year lease. Um, one thing that's, um, is very much in my mind though, is, um, the budget. And at the moment, there's a tremendous amount of, um, goodwill that goes into looking after these. Uh, for example, uh, Ramsgate Glass, um, on average, they replace fifty panes a year at six thousand pounds and they donate that. Uh, there's a window cleaner who, um, uh, tries to clean them once a month, like the equivalent of one thousand and eighty pounds worth of labour. Volunteers clean and sweep, there's repairs and maintenance. And whereas at the moment, everyone is prepared to commit to continue this goodwill if Ramsgate Town Council, um, it, it has the lease for, for shelters, but I think we should keep in mind that you can't guarantee renewed goodwill. And so if at some point in, in the coming years, actually these, this is not available, once I added up what is currently contributed, I would suggest that, um, it's not unreasonable to, to keep a ten thousand pound annual budget for work relating to the shelters. Um, it, it's hope that this is not used and, uh, the goodwill continues. But just in case, I think that would be a sensible amount to, to keep to one side for their, their upkeep.
Uh, I've got councillor Austin, then councillor Wing.
I haven't got many.
Oh, you're sure, you had your hand up there, it must have been written there.
I do heavily get involved in this and I, I think there's an overestimation of the amount of parts. Because since we repaired the ones on the east cliff, like since they were painted, which I think was two or three years ago, there hasn't been a single pane of glass broken on that cliff. And only recently we had a state of seven panels on, yes, on residents. So since we've refurbished, since we've. On Nelson Crescent, so since we refurbished, since we got the East Cliff up, happened to, to standards, we've got to start on Nelson Crescent ones soon as weather goes. There's been less of a vandalism issue and residents run it pretty quickly, particularly over here, we could do with some people keeping an eye on the East Cliff ones. And also the guy that we, we used to have, it was Reflections, who used to clean them four times a year. It's never been once a month and he did that free of charge. Uh, Mr Bubbles has only done one, one clean of the shelters, uh, which we're grateful for, uh, so I, I think the, the costs are sort of highly inflated. We clean ours on Nelson Crescent, but, but yeah, so, so I think if we can maintain them, then we know they've, they've, they've suffered less vandalism. It's if they fall into disrepair, then they get a real, really bad hit. So I think this was a motion I brought forward, so it's good to see you coming forward.
Thank you. Councillor Maykinson?
Oh, are we paying anything for rent for them?
No, no, they're going to have the lease at the main.
They would, they, T D C would probably just ignore them.
Over for.
But enough.
Probably tears would look up. Do they?
And so there's more in the budget actually for shelters. I can tell, there's, 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 there's more in the budget at T D C for shelters actually.
All right, okay.
Councillor Shonk.
Uh, the Rams, the Ramsgate Society used to look after someone, but the, the glass bill was about twelve thousand pound a year for damage. They're probably going to look after them for six years. I'm not saying it's always happened. I think what Becky does, see that they're being loved and careful, might make a difference. But at that end, you walk up there at night, there's people in there with tins of beer, cannabis, I miss out, so I'm on a high when I go up there. But it's, it's, here's a concern, the, the actual cost for six years, that's what you've got to think about.
Councillor Crin.
Yeah, two things. Uh, the first is what will the lease cost us? There's that sort in there, when we charge, but it's, uh, legal, uh, drawing up leases.
The legal drawing up. Absolutely. It's the legal aspect is in management.
Right, apologies. And, and the other is, uh, antisocial behaviour comes and goes, it moves around. So, you know, it's nice time and it's, that's because it's over there and it'll move over there and so you know that there is that risk. And I'd rather work with an overestimation on the cost of maintenance than an underestimation. So, um, those are the three things I want.
I think looking at the lease, you know, if you're going to the lease, the lease in itself is standard lease. Um, of course there's the cost, there always is. So I believe if you're going to take your side, then it's, plus it's not that much. Um, you need to decide that. Um, my own view is, I think, um, I'm all for a bit of belt and braces. So, um, in case all the residents stop, stop doing it or.
We can't do it anymore.
The Ramsgate Society have, have said that they fully support us and with that, so I'm, I'm quite confident of that. But I do think, um, town clerk's proposal there of ten grand, away in your, away in your back pocket, is there, just in case it is, is actually needed. Is your comment, Councillor?
T D C are asking us to cover the insurance, but they will take it. That could be, that could be considered.
Um, I've asked for that figure and it's waited, as well as exactly what peppercorn rent is.
I don't think we need to do this because T D C are looking after shelters elsewhere perfectly. So I don't understand why we want to do it. I, I'm open to somebody to tell me why we want to do it, but I don't think we need to.
I'll tell you what, with the T D C not looking after the shelters around, around the aisle, they're in a terrible state. And these shelters are absolutely universally, universally loved, without a doubt, everybody that stops at those shelters. They're being used by young people, they're being used by old people. They're absolutely magnificent and they're part of our heritage. They, you know, but I remember moving here in two thousand and ten and seeing them absolutely derelict and they would have been better to have been taken out, which T D C were proposing at that time.
I just say to you that the previous administrations of Thanet District Council didn't look after them, but this current administration is looking after them. You've only got to go and look at the, uh, the T S L show, let's see what we can, so into that.
It is maintenance going forward though, that is the issue.
Well, you were, I did say earlier, you might have, you might have missed it, is that in the budget that's coming up tomorrow night at T D C. And we are proposing to, to shelters.
Can I make a proposal? We put ten grand in our back pocket just in case we want to go through this, but wait until we hear about the budget and what the, um, T D C are proposing with regards to shelters, before we make a decision on whether we take them on.
Up to you.
Um, I was just wondering, sorry, this is going back a bit, I'm sure this has come up before, but why are T D C not renewing the lease from Ramsgate Society? Is that because of this? Because they don't want to, because it's without that clause. We lease by anyone of those.
They didn't want it.
I just wanted to clarify that, that's because that was in there.
Councillor Austin.
I just wanted to pick up on what you said Chair, it's great that T D C, current administration is committing to things like this and we've seen big improvements in all sorts of aspects of our public space since we. But we know that, you know, life moves on, et cetera, et cetera. We don't know what's going to happen in a few years' time when we're part of the unitary authority, run from somewhere else. I, I would agree that we need to have this in our back pocket and be looking to, to take this over as appropriate.
Was there a second up for that proposal?
Yeah, I second that.
Seconded. Any other comments?
Did you remind me what the proposal was?
I'm just, I'm just thinking.
Just waiting to see what happens to put them.
Sorry, excuse me.
So picking up on what councillor Austin was saying, as she was just, as she was about to say, I was thinking the same thing. You know, we have got a whole revolution, reorganisation coming up, um, that is going to happen within the six years are being proposed for this lease period. So by the end of the six years, um, we're not going to be leasing from T D C anymore, we're going to be leasing from Joe Bloggs, Joe Soap, whoever is taking over.
I can come back in on that, that in the, in the lease, there's a three year.
Right.
Three year break.
I was thinking more about the six years does at least secure them during that. It's not.
Well, they won't be going anywhere.
Well, yes. So we, we're not, we didn't leave the anchors in that are holding them around. No, but seriously, I, I was just thinking that.
It's only the wind that will get rid of them, nobody else will.
It does secure them in, in our hands, um, um, during this period of change that we're going into.
Because obviously the town council will not be affected in, in, in a major way in relation to.
Oh, of course, absolutely not.
The re, the reorganisation.
I do know that.
Councillor.
Just in, in relation to that, we, we were about to look at councillor Green's paper, which talks about things that town councils may want to step up to do soon because of the impending.
It's a bit previous, I have to say, but, and I, and I will say that at a time when we come up with this.
But this, but this is exactly the kind of thing, you know, if, if we're being run from Ashford, I rather suspect they may not be caring very much about our secret shelters and we do.
God forbid. And I'll say, right, can you go with your proposal again?
So basically, I propose that we put ten grand in our back pocket just in case we do want to take these on, but we don't make any decision yet until we hear T D C's proposal and budget proposal for the shelters in the next term.
And we get answers to some of these things like rent.
Yes.
Yeah, and peppercorn rent.
Yes, on maintenance and insurance.
Sure, service charities.
Yeah, it can come back next time.
Yes, we bring this back next month.
Yeah, can do, yeah. Members all in favour? Thank you, that's carried. Oh. Shelters, right, item eleven, uh, war wreck basketball court, um, I'm gonna, uh, as I've said, I've got a, an interest in this as a cabinet member in relation to this because it's something that I'm involved in. Um, so I'm gonna release the chair and Councillor Nick's is gonna, gonna take, take that over and I'll disappear.
So, um, so, um, war wreck basketball court, um, joint project between Thanet District Council and Ramsgate Skate Park Group. So, this is a really interesting, um, proposal. And the only, the, the only thing that we've really got to consider, uh, at the moment other than this is to do due process properly so that we don't, um, open ourselves up to any investigation. So at the moment, we've got it where the, um, two Central Harbour councillors are also on the war wreck and I know that you've given your, um, declarations of interest. However, I've been advised, just to make sure that everything is squeaky clean, and I'm not saying that we don't want this, I'm just saying so it's due process, is it, it would be better if it, if it was approached in the manner of an application to a grant funding source? Okay? So am I right in suggesting it? Yeah, please do.
May I say, it was actually, um, by suggestion to the ward councillors that, um, to bring it, that an option was to bring it forward as, as, as ward councillors can bring projects forward, um, knowing that the grant scrutiny panel has now met for, that, that the final time this quarter and that actually a, a decision is required before the end of this financial year. Um, so I'm afraid that actually was my advice to the, the ward councillors, if they wanted to bring this forward as, as councillors.
Chair, you've been told the opposite, so. So we as a group are perfectly okay to go forward and that is, apologies, advice taken, thank you.
Could I just point out, this comes from our central harbour councils because we've all been very involved with skate park, but actually as everybody knows, particularly those, those, um, ward councillors in neighbouring wards, the skate park sits right across the boundary of Central Harbour, Newington and to Nethercourt. And obviously it serves the whole town.
Yeah, I, I don't think it isn't Nethercourt actually.
It backs onto Nethercourt, it backs onto, it, it, it runs along between Central Harbour and Newington.
Yes.
It's.
It backs onto Nethercourt, but it doesn't, it's not in that, you're right, yes, yes.
Where actually, when you try and pin down where the whole boundary is, it's somewhere in the middle of that pack of.
Yes.
Not that far from East Cliff too.
It's not up there anyway.
So we're being asked Ramsgate Town Council to commit up to a maximum eight thousand pounds from the twenty five, twenty six new project budget, the current balance being twenty three thousand pounds at the moment, to underwrite the shortfall required to complete the basketball court resurfacing project. Is there anything else you want to tell us about this, now that you're, you're here and you're knowledgeable about it?
Yes, we had originally applied way, way back when Noah was a lad to Thanet District Council as the, as the skate park group to either take over that area of the war wreck ourselves by setting up a trust or to transfer it to Ramsgate Town Council. The reason for that was that at that time, Sport England was offering a hundred percent funding to town and parish councils and voluntary groups, but not to district councils. So we could have had a hundred percent funding and done the whole skate park. They were desperate to spend money in Thanet. Of course, T D C processes being as they are, it took the best part of a year even to get a reply to the email. It took another year to get a meeting with senior officers, et cetera, et cetera. Time has gone on. In the meanwhile, the Sport England funding rules have changed. We have put in small applications to do this little bit of work to get something going there, uh, while we were waiting for the other discussions to happen. And it has become apparent that it's actually more sensible to leave the ownership of Thanet District Council, um, because of the, you know, repairs and maintenance and all those kinds of things. That being the case, the process that Thanet District Council has to go through to do this work is much more rigorous than the one that we were told would be okay previously. And so therefore it looks like the costs have gone up in the meanwhile. But we have grant funding that we have secured from a variety of sources through the skate park group that has to be spent by the end of March. So we are prepared to put that in and to put some of our ward money in and to put, um, basically what's left in the skate park group's bank account in, still won't actually cover everything that's required.
Hmm. So it says an absolute maximum of nineteen thousand pounds is available from the war wreck skate park group in your proposal.
At, at that time, we were also approached by the governing body of skateboarding and they, they were looking for a base in the south east. And they actually came and approached the skate group there. And we tried to engage with the then CEO of T D C to say, look, we, we've written this type of bid before, they've come to us, give us a paid officer to work alongside us and we'll do the donkey work. Uh, and it, we never, although that person went away and said, we'll be in touch, it was literally hundreds of emails later, we never, so we lost the huge access to a hu, a large amount of, uh, skate, skateboarding money that, that for the south east as well. But I'm, I think, I think I, I'm also part of the youth CAG that's happening at T D C. And it's really interesting that some of the feedback that's coming back from youngsters is exactly the same as what we want as adults, so somewhere safe to be. And, and presently, my P E background tells me that that whole facility out there should actually be condemned, it's not safe for playing basketball on at all. There should be nobody playing on it. So I think we owe it to our young people to try and improve some of the very small amount of facilities that particularly exist for twelve to sort of early twenty year olds. They don't really exist and they don't form part of one oh six money either, it's little playgrounds. So, yeah, we need to, we need to support our young people as well.
Okay, I'll come back to you councillor Austin, I've got councillor Crin first.
I'm just thinking the last two paragraphs of the actual report, um, councillor Austin was just going to say, the skate park group's funding wasn't sent on the first of March. And then there is, um, some other funding listed in the next paragraph that it needs to be spent in order to keep it secured. Um, this, and, and I very much support, and I think we should be supporting this because the other thing is that this is way through three wards need and it is outside of the town centre. And so, uh, that fact is, you know, we, we have made a, a policy, um, some while ago that we wanted to, to make sure that we didn't forget about the outer regions, because that had been something that had been happening. So looking at those two sets of figures, in conjunction with our desire to support those outer areas more than we had previously, I think we should go with it.
Okay, and is that your proposal?
I'll make that proposal if you wish, yes.
Okay, I've got councillor Shonk then councillor Green.
You first?
Yeah, you can. Uh. How well used is the, uh, basketball court and have you had any funding for skateboarding? Just an interest because it is an unloved part of Ramsgate. Uh, it's good to see youngsters playing up there. I, I'm really interested how many, how well used will that basketball court be used?
We think it'd be quite significantly used, um, be for basketball, but also by people learning to skate. Skate, um, bowl, bowl as it is, is quite steep and dangerous, it's great for expert skaters, it's not great for younger, uh, youngsters wanting to learn and that sort of surface. So I am advised by Mrs Morgan, whose children have done all of this and she's gone through it all with them.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Councillor Green.
I was just going to ask whether this, the, uh, basketball court could be used for anything else.
Precisely, yes, they will try and make it a, um, sport, I think.
Just before I ask for a second, uh, for the proposal, I do think we also, I mean, if this goes through, for example, I think we ne- need to make a point of the fact that it's funded by Ramsgate Town Council, promote it for the whole of, you know, Ramsgate, especially the three wards and so on and so forth, and make a real song and dance over this because that would be quite a major thing for the community to have, so that people do actually get to use it because they realise that it's being done. But anyway, I've got councillor Austin wanted to speak.
I just wanted to think up on something that somebody mentioned, section one oh six monies or whatever, we did actually have that discussion with Tony Momo, um, uh, from Thanet District Council at the skate park the other week, about whether there was section one oh six monies coming through. And he said, yes, there might be, you know, at some point in the future from all the new houses going on, uh, in the, uh, uh, along the Mansfield Road, et cetera, but that, that would be sort of two years down the line. So it might be great for the refurbishment of the skate park itself, but it's no good for the short term.
but it's no good for the short-term project.
Right, okay, thank you. Councillor Green?
I just think for £8,000, it's, let's do it.
I agree.
Do I have a second of the proposal?
Am I alone?
Yeah, we can say. No, we can't say. Thank you, Laurie. We can't vote either, can we?
All those in favour? That's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Skateboard, adult skateboard lessons will be voluble. One fracture down was enough, thank you very much. Yes, and I've got your autograph, so I can stay where we're at with it, so we're hoping this will get this through. Yes.
Right, members, item 12, local government reorganisations. As you see, councillor Green's come forward with a favour and a motion. I'm just going to give you my thoughts on it, because I disagree with this coming so soon. I think it's premature, members. I think it's premature, I think it's premature, because we do not know what the government are going to say in relation to town councils. The information on the, on councillor Green's paper is from other councils, with other, with other government. For town councils and parish councils. And whilst councillor Green and I, this is a genuine disagreement on this. I also think that the proposal in the motion to write that to the legislature just actually means nothing, because, and, I mean, because until we know what the issues are, then I think as a council, we'd like to bring a paper forward, but I think it's the wrong time. That's my opinion. And, but it's up to you, members, if you want to discuss, then you discuss away. Councillor Shanklin?
I'm not presenting what I'm.
Well, yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah. No, 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 councillor Shanklin, I'll fire it and let councillor Green bring his paper forward. No, I just said, could you hold fire and let councillor Green bring his paper forward?
It is early days and there is a lot of unknowns. What we do know is that TDC and KCC disappear. And that a unitary authority, we will be part of a unitary authority either involving three existing councils or four existing councils, which will have a electorate of between four and five hundred thousand, in my opinion. And so all our existing councillors, whoever may there are, I think there's 15 in Ramsgate, we're unlikely to have more than four councillors go into this new authority based elsewhere. So there will certainly have to be daytime meetings, which would be very restrictive of the sort of person that can become a councillor. So I think there's going to be a democratic deficit built into what's being proposed. Secondly, we know that KCC currently really struggles to finance some of its statutory responsibilities. And is already shedding some non-statutory responsibilities across its portfolio, like youth facilities, libraries, et cetera. And KCC currently has a debt of around about a thousand pounds per electorate. Some of the other councils, district councils, that we're likely to be thrown in with also have debts of up to a thousand pounds per electorate. So I believe that whatever happens, these new authorities won't get any bailout money from the government. That's in the letter that TDC's received. They're going to be struggling to meet their statutory responsibilities, which puts a lot of the non-statutory responsibilities currently run by KCC or TDC under threat. It is early days on this proposal under the new government, but we do know that elsewhere in the country, many areas have already gone down this route, where they've moved from district and county councils to unitary authorities. And what's happened there is almost universally, whereas a town involved in these proposals, those town councils have taken on a number of responsibilities that are purely local to their town. Most frequently open spaces, but also lots of other facilities. And I've listed some of them in what I've written. Now, in the letter that TDC has received, it does say that when they bring forward interim proposals, which they've got to do by the 21st of March, they need to show that they're consulted locally and what the local opinion is. I don't know whether TDC plans to do this and meet that requirement, but I'm personally not prepared just to leave it to them to do. They have a lot of other issues, enormous issues in this reorganisation, particularly with regard to what happens to the TDC staff. So I think they may have other things on their mind. So I don't want to live it to chance that TDC considers local opinion and in particular, this council's opinion. So what I'm recommending this council does is that they write a letter to the local MP, leader of KCC, leader of TDC, and the CEOs of each, advising them that there is a role for local, that local councils could and have in other areas play, can play in the local government reform, particularly in delivering family local services and ensuring that there's adequate local representation. That's the first thing that I think we should do. Secondly, that we discuss what sorts of assets or services that we believe would be in the interests of residents to deliver and manage by us. And that when we've done that, we write to KCC and TDC expressing an interest. And then that this council tries to model the potential costs, income and liabilities of any, of the asset transfers that we're proposing. And finally, that we try to talk to our local electorate, so that they understand and what the impacts of this would likely to be on the parish precinct.
Thank you. Councillor Shanklin?
I've taken most of what it said, David, and I'm not denying it, but I think it's too soon, too early. And I mean, when I heard this at KCC, I did speak up and say that the Conservative ruling group were walking down a blind alley, but they was quite happy to get over the keys and say, there, we're going to walk away from the responsibilities. At the end of the day, what we was going to be denied is our voting rights in May. And I like to be elected, might not get in, I always like to go and give the benefit of the doubt to the voting electorate who seem to have been forgotten on this matter. So there's lots, we could talk about this all night. And in fact, I say it's far too early to talk about this. Because when these people come in, I think the voting electorate are going to be the last people going to be listened to. Because it's so vast, it's so huge. So I think it was too soon to start talking about this, although somewhere along the line, half what David said is quite true. It's a real concern, but the main issue was our rights to vote in May is going to be taken away from us, which is about 5.5 million people. I like to get myself elected. So that's the biggest, that is the biggest concern.
Councillor Shanklin, but if I can just come in there and to say that the elections are taking place, they're not, not taking place, they are taking. And that's why you're saying, I don't know what you're worried about, because they are taking place.
At that time, they weren't, when my department was.
Yeah, okay, councillor Quindon, then councillor Austin.
Yeah, I actually support councillor Green completely. I don't think it is too early to start thinking about particularly the second, third and fourth items. I'm not quite so sure about the holding letter. We know that the leaders of the district councils by and large are barely considered in the discussions at KCC, and that's not because KCC don't care, that's because that's the way the holding has been set up. So this is an upper-tier-led decision recommendations. So I'm not entirely sure of the value of writing those holding letters, particularly to TDC. But certainly, there is absolutely no harm in identifying the kind of assets and services that we could take part in or costs, or engaging with residents. So I actually plan to support it.
Okay, and I'll just come in there and say, obviously, the government has said they will be consulting town and parish councils in relation to this.
So we can prepare for it.
But you can't prepare for something you don't know what the government are going to ask. And then there's the costing, you've got all the costings for it. So if they say, this is what we're expecting you, town council, to take on, then you can, you can then decide whether there's anything else around that you want to take on. Anyway, can also say as well, as part of, as part of the thing, if councillor Green's up for it is that some of this could go to F and GP for discussion.
Well, we've got a deadline, haven't we?
No, we haven't got a deadline. Fannet District Council have got a deadline. We haven't got a deadline, we've got no deadlines whatsoever. Fannet District Council have got deadlines to report back, and that is mainly over, over of which, boundaries that they go wherever they go with paper.
Boundaries, but it's also to inform the government what people locally think.
Yeah, and that will be, and that will be on the boundaries.
No.
Not on anything else.
On the proposal.
Well, I don't agree with you. Anyway, let's leave that there. Right, I've got councillor Austin and councillor Nixon, councillor Wing.
Thoroughly support councillor Green's proposal. I have the same slight reservation as councillor Quindon about the first part. On the other hand, I do think it's quite important that we step up and say, hey, we're interested in this to the district and the county council at this stage, so they know, which may be a relief to certain parties within that. But looking at the ridiculously short timescales that there have been so far in these government plans, I wouldn't be at all surprised if we don't get something that says, hey, town councils, reply by a week on Monday. I think we should be prepared, I think we should be thinking about it now, I think we should be doing some costings now and planning, and if it doesn't happen, we haven't lost anything. But I think, we know there are councils in Kent now that are planning on devolving stuff to their town councils before any of this happens. So I think we need to be mindful of that and.
But it'd be up to town councils whether they take it on unless, unless they are told by government.
And they might be told by government, but I think we should, I think we should prepare for it, yeah.
Other stuff that's frivolous is. Carry on, councillor Nixon.
So, yeah, I think I'm more inclined to want to talk about something before we're told by the government. Only in the sense that since devolution has been announced and things have come to parish councils and so on and so forth, it's like what you're prepared for, it's like I've learnt quite a lot in that amount of time. And I just think getting ourselves abreast of what's going on and things that could happen isn't necessarily a bad thing to do, like councillor Austin says. I don't think I thoroughly decide anything, but seeing, I think in some ways, what I would prefer is to have a meeting with ourselves and possibly the senior officers, just for us to be aware of what are our capabilities, what could happen, just as you would with any sort of like risk assessment or anything like that, your risk assessment before the event happens, don't you? So it's that sort of like risk assessment scenario, I'm thinking, right, well, we could do this, we definitely don't want that, these are the things that are possible, so that when it happens, we have more of an awareness. I'm not too worried about writing a letter, I just, I'm talking about clarity for ourselves and our senior officers and what we are as a council capable of, only because like I say, it's a risk assessment scenario that I'm thinking.
Right, I've got councillor Wing.
I fully support this as well. I mean, I think we've, you know, the one thing that's been missed out, the whole conversation that's been missed out has been town and parish councils and residents. And residents, and I think in order for us to make evidence-based decisions further down the line, we've got quite a lot of work we need to do now. What can we take on, what should we be taking on, what the residents want us to take on? They're all questions that really seriously need to be answered. And I think we all know our residents, and our residents would love us to have the fountain and Ellington Park, so we're sort of pushing at an open door. But are we aware of what additional capacity will we need to take these things on? Well, if we haven't done the background research, how do we know how much it is going to cost us to keep the grass cut in Ellington Park, for example, if we, if we need to take that on? So for me, this is about being prudent, and it's about gathering all that evidence around assets and what we may need to have in place in order to keep them and maintain them, so that we can be ready to respond in any way possible to anything that might be dumped on us quite quickly. And we know it's going to be quite quickly and spoken to. I would quite like the letter to go out, because I just want to know what the response would be from people. And, you know, we know that most of it's going to be, we don't know any more than you know, which is also worrying. I think we sow, we need to sow a seed and we need to do our research and our background preparation.
I think, I think if you're going to go down this line, it's not going to be done, you know? Always councillor Green's saying, anything's that, that is going to happen.
I don't think we have.
But we're talking, we're talking 2027. We're talking 2027, wherever it goes. Anyway, councillor Ashby, then councillor Whitehead.
It's good to talk about it, I agree, councillor Green. My understanding is it's actually been driven by the Treasury, so it's come from the top, and it's about saving money.
I think we're going to save money.
So in terms of unitary authorities and getting rid of borough and district councils.
It's actually, it'll be financed.
Can I just, councillor Green, can I just let councillor Ashby?
But you're talking.
Can I just let councillor Ashby?
So we could have a, set up a working group to start talking about these things, the cost and what we want to take on. I mean, the unitary authorities can't just dump stuff on Ramsgate Town Council and East Kent Unitary Authority, they would have to give, or the government would have to give us more money. at East Kent Unitary Authority. They would have to give, or the government would have to give us more money, as you say, for resources, et cetera. I mean, we could, once we've done some research, we could write to Jim at Mynheer, the Minister of State for local government and say, we're not happy. We're copying everyone else into it. So it's a way of starting off a conversation, but the government really isn't very interested in parish and town councils. The town clerk has said in various emails. And I believe that's the sort of feeling you've got from the meetings you've had. With other councils.
Guys and girls. Thank you. Did you want to come in here? Councillor Green, I know. Let you come in now.
Well, no, some of the people wanted to speak.
Okay, you wanted to come in there.
Okay.
Okay. Councillor Whitehead.
I'm not being misunderstood, but some of you probably know how horrified I get at the fact that TDC owns Ramsgate shelters and they own, presumably they own the fountain and they own all sorts of things. Shouldn't we be trying to get the things that belong to us, eh, back to Ramsgate instead of going to Ashford or wherever, Dover? Shouldn't we turn to our assets for the council? I know it will mean more work for the council and more staff for the council, but it will also mean more representation for residents.
No one's denying that. No one's denying that, and that's this council to decide as to what it wants to do. All I've, all I've been saying was I think it's a bit too early to do.
But we must.
I'm obviously getting, I'm obviously getting the vibe from, from the members that it's, that it's, that it's not. So.
If I could just come and tell that. The reason that happened is because at the last of the government reorganization, Ramsgate Borough Council, it was then, did nothing. They waited to be told what TDC wanted, if it set up, wanted that. So all our, all Ramsgate's borough councils' assets were transferred to TDC. In other places, they set up trusts.
Sandwiches, yes, exactly, sandwichs.
Eastbourne, et cetera, set up trusts to hold their assets. And that's why they have got them.
Anybody else? Councillor Critton.
I just wanted to add that it's, this is about preparation. And you don't have to, for example, try and set up a station. You've got it before. This is about preparation.
Okay, what, so Councillor Green's, either you're going to go with recommendation Councillor Green's put forward, although there's been no second yet.
First second or seconded.
Okay, whatever. But there's been other things spoken about that you may wish to add into.
I think we've got a motion on the table. It's been seconded, so we need to vote.
But there's been, there's been comments in relation to not sending a letter. I'm just reminding you of that.
It can be amended.
It's up to you. Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. Do you want to amend it? Do you want to amend it or not? No, hang on, I think Councillor Nixie was.
I would like to amend it. I'm not too worried about the letter because I think that's something we can come back to later. I would like, I would like us to have a meeting, whether it's open or closed, with the senior officers, just to to have a bit of a brainstorm and think about things that we can start to investigate. So that's the amendment.
So we could put that in the letter.
By seniors, do you mean RTC seniors?
Yeah, senior officers. I think, I mean, it's all very well us deciding and we need to talk about what the capability is and how it will impact on.
A bit like a member's briefing like we did with Radford House.
Yes, absolutely the same.
Sorry, when you say, just confirm that to me, who it is you want to speak to.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Sorry.
Who is it you want to speak to?
At the moment, I want us to have a discussion with senior officers, just to.
Senior officers of RTC?
Yeah, so that we are talking.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, I thought it was all about TDC.
No, no, I didn't mean RTC. So we, we are having a
Having a discussion.
A discussion amongst ourselves before we do anything else, just so that we can start to brainstorm, get ideas on the table. Because it's pointless writing a letter if we haven't had a discussion, a proper discussion with ideas of like what we could be against.
We haven't got a lot of time.
It was mooted earlier about this falling under F and GP. And I'm just wondering whether we should add a line at the bottom that says that F and GP as a committee would take the lead on it. I think it would be more sensible than a group of fifteen. That's possibly wrong. I don't know how Councillor Green goes on that. Does actually fit in, I think.
Not all on it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I want F and GP.
Sorry, David, what did you say?
Not everybody is on F and GP.
No, and I think my view on that would be if it was to go to F and GP, we allow
Exceptional meaning.
An exceptional thing.
More likely to come under asset management.
But then again, you're all in here as a council, so we can, we can have an extraordinary council. And I think that would be, that would be the best way, then everybody's entitled to be there. Everybody's entitled to speak. I think that would be the better way.
I just asked the town clerk whether we could do that and still make the fifteenth of March deadline, twenty first of March deadline.
I believe it's the thirty first of March.
Oh, twenty first.
But we have F and, we have F and GP in a couple of weeks' time. It could be something that's added on before or after that meeting. I think it's how much information we want to drill down into. We won't have time to come up with business plans, lots of different assets and services. But definitely, I think there's time to brainstorm kind of theme, possibility, possibilities.
I think would it, would it, would it then be a good idea for individual members to come up with what they want, an email in instead of, you're done?
I think, no, I think it's much easier to discuss it. Amberie's, sorry, Councillor Nixie's idea of a sort of a members, like we did with Radford House, where there was freedom to not stick to an agenda in a sense.
Ask silly questions.
And pick people's brains, including our officers.
Yes, I think we must have the officers involved in this.
Okay. Any, Councillor Ashby?
The town clerk, name of other town councils in Kent, what are they doing? Are they panicking? They seem to be panicking. I think it's fine. Honestly, it's going to be fine.
They're doing exactly what they're doing.
Right, oh, that's good then.
The town clerk is, you don't mind me saying, is in touch with other councils.
Yes, yeah.
And doing exactly the same thing, including even the parish council.
And already getting rid of their assets.
It'll be so much better.
Members, I'm sorry, old type, thank you. Councillor Critton there.
This be a closed meeting?
I think it ought to be, just initially.
Yeah, it would be public.
That's why I just wanted to clarify this.
Okay, that's Radford House was, wasn't it? That was a closed meeting, that wasn't.
Councillor Ashby.
People don't like change.
I don't mind change.
Nobody likes change. It's a human condition. But take it from me, unitary authorities will be much, much better. The economy's a scale in terms, you know, we can go into all that. There's all this research has been done on it.
We're going to be a part.
Yeah, and they're not finished.
Not backwards.
But it will be a change and it'll take quite a long time. It will cost months to do it. But a lot of the services will go down to Ramsgate Town Council because they'll have to. So this is what's happened in other areas, so that's what will happen here.
Okay. Councillor Ashby, the next.
I shall make it quicker. A month ago, we were with KCC. In fact, I was going to be sitting there.
Members, please. Please.
At KCC, in fact, I was sitting there with others. So I'd be in power in twenty twenty six without having any vote. And then would someone, you know, to the authority be sitting next to me? I'll be there for twenty twenty seven. That was my argument, nothing else, politics. We should have a right to vote on that day. We have now, but we wasn't going to. The only thing about this, if we can have a private meeting, if we can all have a say. And the only thing I was telling this is, I'm not saying I disagree, that's what the Greens said. But I think the voting electorate should have a say and always get some information out to them.
Quite forward, quite forward. Councillor Ashby is thinking about elections. And we should have been talking about elections.
We're not.
This is not, we're coming back and talking about an election and voting. And we shouldn't be discussing elections in this meeting.
It's in the paper every day.
Yeah, but it's not.
Yeah, but it's not here, not what, it's not what we're discussing. Thank you for that. Right, let's, let's get on to the motion. It's the main motion here, pass the amendment.
Pass the amendment.
And we have a meeting with the officers, yeah.
The, the, the letter is not sent until a later day, when we might not.
We might not have to do it, but anyway.
I don't think that was part of the amendment.
Right, okay, you know what it is, so it's been
Proposed a second.
Proposed a second, yeah.
Yep.
Well, the amendment has, the amendment's been proposed and seconded. But not voted on.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Is we're doing.
So we're voting on the whole motion?
No, vote on amendment.
Amendment, all right.
Vote on amendment and that goes into the full motion.
All right, okay.
All in favour of the amendment?
Well, what precisely is?
What is the amendment?
Councillor Wing added something to it.
No, no, that wasn't accepted. That's not.
What is the amendment? I'm confused.
Well, there's no, could you say what your amendment is again, Councillor Nixie?
So the amendment is that we have a closed meeting of councillors and officers to brainstorm the possibility of what could happen, just to be able to prepare ourselves. And at that point, we can decide if we want to send a letter. And if we have to do this before the deadlines, if we didn't want to send a letter, we are within the time limit.
Okay, you got there. All in favour, please, Joe? Thank you.
Substantive motion.
Now, yes, I'm just coming to that. Substantive motion, so the motion, including the amendment, is what's before you.
Proposed, seconded, but.
All in favour. Thank you very much. Let's carry on. Got it in the end, if we're not. Okay. Item thirteen is to be, it's confidential item, so it's recommended that Public Bodies and Meetings Act nineteen sixty, blah, 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 that we do not, that we now have a closed meeting, so members of the public will not be able to hear our deliberations on this subject. All in favour, please, Joe? Thank you, that's agreed.
Do you need to propose one second?
He proposed a my amendment.